Learn about social media and she made a comment like, "Man, there's parents following this account. We just want it to be for kids." I think it's kind of a cool experience for them to realize that sometimes your intended audience broadens out wider than maybe you thought. So some really great teaching moments there for them. EMT class led by Ski. I got to be a patient for them last week. They practiced taking me down the stairs. But I also watched them, they took some four different vitals. They went around to, I think actually, a CNA class, which will be kind of a cool thing, I think. Kids can take CNA one semester and then take EMT next semester and get a really great medical world experience. And then Student Council is just doing a great job with homecoming. Mrs. King has stepped into her new role and gone blazing, so it's been good. And then this is our poster that we have that you'll see in some classrooms here and actually out in the comments area. Be the way.
Pass along a comment to Ms. King. My cousin owns the tux rental place in Trelax, the dress shop. And she texted me and she was really complimentary of us that we interact together because the Trelax didn't.
Oh, cool. That's good to hear.
You're very helpful with this.
Where's the pet fest at? Elementary block? Right out in the front parking lot. So the elementary will be on the building side and the high school will have in the grass area there. You're welcome to come watch.
We're trying to cheer.
Yeah. We will put you in the Harry costume if you're willing to go.
Thanks.
Elementary, we're at 426 at this point. BPK is at 41. The three-year-olds are at 43 and Hetsard's at 34, so good numbers in our preschool programs again. During workshop, we had a three-hour training with our, with the people from Bridges and the Number Corner. So that was good for our teachers to get introduced to some of the language and talk of the Number Corner and they're all off using it, so that was good. Our White House team planned homecoming events at the elementary. Yesterday was color day, so every class had a different color and they wanted to do a picture, so we said, "Well, let's have a fire drill. We'll get them all outside and get them back to the school for a picture." So we did that, that turned out pretty cool, so we've got two of our fire drills done now. Also, first week of school, teachers completed bus safety. As well as this year, one of the new laws that was put in place is we have to complete walking slash bike safety with all the students. So teachers have also gone over that. The walking is how to cross the street safely using crosswalks, things like that. So there was a good video sent out with it and so that's been completed. Said we've got two fire drills done now and they've both been beautiful days, which is nice. October 9th, our workshop, we'll have seven habits. We'll meet with our rep again. Our instructional leadership team will be talking about Number Corner as well as looking at test scores and then starting our reading slash writing breakdown that we did a couple years ago with math, but with reading this time. And we'll also have a presentation on the reading app and give more information to staff. We purposely waited till now because the first four days of workshop, they have so much going on, so much going through their head. Now their room is ready and they can actually start to process some of the information, so we'll start giving them some of that. October 26th is going to be our first Title I night of the year and they're going to do a book bingo night starting at 6:15 at the cafeteria at the elementary. So activities. September 11th was our Minnesota State High School League area meetings. The High School League comes out, they used to come out twice a year, now they just come out one time a year and school is required to have a rep there otherwise we get fined $500. And it was three and a half hours of listening to different presentations of what's been put in, kind of laws by the state that affect not only High School League but also schools. A lot of good information. Every three years, a High School League has a whole new set of modules for coaches that they have to do. And law was put in, it was quite a few years ago now, but where every three years, coaches have to be trained concussion. So this is a year that, with that, they redo all their modules. So this year, all our coaches have to go through these six modules. There's one, it's a general coaches rule. It's kind of an overview of all kind of Minnesota State High School League rules. The second one is a sport specific. So if it's specific to cross-country, specific to football, whatever sport you're coaching, you have a specific one for that. So if you go coach multiple sports, you have several different videos of that you have to watch. The other ones, the other four are one, same ones for no matter what sport, a concussion course, inside-out coaching, mental wellness, helping at-risk students, and university equity inclusion and the aligning in the Minnesota State High School League. This is put in as the last few years, there's been issues that have popped up at different activities. So they're really trying to push the, you know, everyone's equal and how to treat others at games. High School League did put out a list of expectations for games and did I share that in August? I know I shared it at the family night, the back-to-school night, but I'll probably, I'll bring that for the next board meeting. I should include it at this one, but. And those expectations were all made by students as they have different cohorts that meet around the state. And we had a group of students who went over to Curham on Monday to first meeting of this year from students of this area. Chuck Everett, who has been in charge of Region 6A, is retiring at the end of this year. So if you know of anyone that is interested in running our region, that will be opening up. We are going to send something out October 1st. The entry, middle of November, the application in. And then interviews will be in the middle of December. And then the plan is to have the applicant work the last five months of the school year with Mr. Everett, kind of get a feel for the job. And then Mr. Everett will step away and then they will continue the following year. So, and that position is running all the activities that happen in our Region 6A. So, and then the last thing I forgot to put on here, but like Lauren mentioned, the gala this weekend, congratulations, those members who won the Hall of Fame. So it's always a good time and it sounds like the tickets are sold out, so congratulations to those members. Any questions?
All right. Thank you. Three live carries.
Back and hit stop.
Everyone who's in attendance, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To everybody. First item off will be to approve the meeting agenda. Has stated, yeah, okay. Do we have a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting agenda.
Motion by Brandon. We have a second. About Molly. Any discussion on the meeting agenda?
Here we know discussion, all of the favor approving the agenda signify the same, aye. Aye, those opposed, same. Agenda carries. Opportunity for visitors to address the board. Would you like to address the board? Okay. We'll move on, we have some acknowledgements. We have school foundation, thank them for all their work for the help, excuse me, work to help raise money for teachers and programs in our school. Technology staff, it's IT Appreciation Day, it was yesterday. Right, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, thank you to our tech team for everything they do to keep us up and running with technology and to our school foundation who provide opportunities to raise money for our teachers to apply for grants. So appreciate all their work, which benefits students, kids.
Okay. We have someone here to provide a presentation. Safe Routes to School presentation, it's Mallory Therapy.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So.
I'll let you take the spotlight.
Sounds good, so I actually have the printed copies, they're fresh. So I'm just going to pass them around so you can look at them. And then these are the school districts. So, as an update, Mallory Therapy, I work for West Central Initiative as a transportation planner. Pelican Rapids, the school district of the city, co-applied for a grant through MINDOT to have a Safe Routes to School plan and that's what we did all last school year. So I'm just going to give an update on how the planning went, what were some key takeaways, and answer any questions you may have. So just to give an overview, I just want to say that with Safe Routes to School, it's not that I'm against driving. I drive, I drove here. But it's that when kids go to school, they should have the opportunity to walk, bike, in a safe and equitable manner. So maybe they want to drive one morning, but they shouldn't feel discouraged from walking. Our infrastructure system should be safe and they should feel comfortable walking in their community. So the plan is based on the six E's approach. It's based on education, engineering, sidewalks, engagement, evaluation, encouragement, equity and enforcement. Components of the plan, so we did a lot of data collection over this past year, including an observation day. So you might have noticed, we were outside with some vests and clipboard watching how kids got to and from school, whether they walked, whether they rolled, how was student drop-off and bus pickup, where are kids actually walking in the community and some key takeaways from there. That also included a walk audit, so me and some other staff walked throughout Pelican and assessed the current infrastructures of sidewalks, curb cuts, where are their sidewalks, where aren't their sidewalks, what are the current conditions. Then we did a public engagement session, so you might have noticed that, parent-teacher conferences. I was at elementary school and my boss was at the high school. We tabled, then we polled parents and families, what discourages kids from walking and biking to school and what are some solutions to help encourage kids to walk and bike to school. We also did a student travel tally, so if your teacher is probably familiar with that, we had the teachers ask for, ask the students how they got to and from school in a three-day period. And that helped us, helped us get some raw numbers on how many students are actually walking and biking to school. And then we did a student, a school environment and policy assessment. So looking at your transportation policies, your wellness policies, what are the conditions around the school in terms of infrastructure? So some statistics. So about 3% of the Viking Elementary students walked to school and about 1% biked. A lot higher in the high school, 6% walked to school, but we had no bikers on the day that we were out or on the three-day student travel tally. There are some bikers, but it's such a negligible amount that it's around zero. And this is very interesting because about 15 to 20% of students live within a half a mile of the school. So if you live anywhere in Pelican, it's a very walkable community in terms of distance. I don't think there's anywhere that's more than a mile from the school unless you're going way out by Currie Lake, but it's an inherently very walkable, bikeable city. So how to encourage students if they want to walk and bike to school, get them to do that. Some major concerns that I found over the course of this planning. Parents were concerned about traffic along the school, I mean Highway 59 and 108, it's pretty obvious. Traffic speeds, so even though it is 30 miles an hour in town everywhere, is traffic actually going 30 miles an hour? So that was concern of semis and cars flying down 59. The convenience of driving, of course. Maybe you do live just a quarter mile from the school, but you want to drive anyway. Weather and climate, it gets pretty chilly. Lack of sidewalks and safety at intersections was also pretty prominent. There is a pretty sparse sidewalk network once you're in the neighborhood, so along the major thoroughfare roads, we do have a pretty good sidewalk network. Once you're in the communities, there's not too many sidewalks. And then there was some fear of violence or crime, so parents feeling discouraged from having their students walk and bike by themselves to school. And some solutions that parents would seem to like was less traffic. And that can be done by the more kids who walk and bike to school, the less traffic at student pickup and drop-off. So they kind of go hand-in-hand. Better and more sidewalks, safer intersections, slowing down car speeds, and then having more crossing guards is also a popular thing. Some other questions that we asked in the parent survey was how does the school district, does a school district support walking and biking? A lot of parents felt either neutral, that the school district doesn't really stand on kids walking and biking to school, and some even said the school district actively discourages kids from walking and biking to school. So that's something the school district can do is do promote walking and biking to school. There are special days, so October 4th is coming up, that is National Walk to School Day. So having the programming and the policies in place that support kids to walk and bike to school. So, if you want to open your plans to page 15. So on page 15, and this plan is also available on the WCI website, and if you're, I can send a link to Brian, he knows it out. You can download it and print your own copy, it's over 100 pages, so I don't know if I'd want to print it. But yeah, it's free to the public. So on infrastructure opportunities, we did designate special sidewalks that we think should be highlighted as places to build sidewalks in the future. And this is to create a sidewalk network where maybe you live on streets without sidewalks, but you can take one or two blocks to a sidewalk network and then find your way to school. And then continuing on the pages, it gives a list of recommendations for specific spots in the community. So one was better curb ramps in the Viking parking lot, so a more direct connection to the sidewalk network there. Pelican Rapids Athletic Fields, there was discussion about putting a trail in the future from the South Apartment Complex to the elementary school, because I know currently there is a pretty popular bus pickup at that, at that location and they're just busting down and it would be shorter to just walk to the school. So creating a safe network for parents and students to walk there. The intersection, Highway 59 and Fifth Avenue South, and that will be redone with the 59-108 project next year. First Street South and Fifth Avenue, that's the intersection by the elementary school. So I know it was repainted, but maybe putting some curb bumpouts and enhancing that intersection because there was a lot of kids who came from that road if they walked or biked to school, to the elementary school. First Street Southeast, Southwest and Fifth Avenue, that's the intersection by the high school leading to the soccer field. And so the long-term vision is having a sidewalk all the way to the soccer field and that would be a component of that. Highway 59 and Fourth Avenue, so that is where the flashing lights are and that will also be redone with the projects coming next year. First Street Northeast, Northwest and State Highway 108. So that is highlighted in this plan as the connection from those northern neighborhoods by the Turkey Plan and giving a really safe crossing south. Because it's a pretty straight shot when you go behind the library across into the high school. Not many kids would want to go to Highway 59, down and then back to the high school. Giving them a safe crossing off the busy, busy roads. And then sidewalk development throughout the city. So the next recommendations, if you want to go to page 29. So the plan is both infrastructure but also programming. So what can we do as a community and in school to help kids walk and bike to school? So some programs that the school already does is crossing guards and you have your Students Against Destructive Decisions, so really great start. But then we also had a list of programs. So the first one, if you notice, is the bike fleet and very exciting. The school district did receive a grant to get that, so we're already chipping away at some program to make it safer for kids. Other things, so school curriculum is on there. There is a curriculum developed by the Bicycle Alliance of Minnesota that can be taught in PE classes. It would also fulfill the new education requirement for walking and biking safety and hopefully we'll use that with the new bike fleet for school again. And then you can take a look through all these, Walk and Bike to School Day. There are three Walk and Bike to School Days during the school year. There is Walk to School Day on October 4th. Minnesota does their own Winter Walk to School Day, so bundling kids up in February. And then there's National Bike to School Day in May. Next, if you want to turn to page 35. So on page 35, these are the priorities, Safe Routes to School initiatives that we decided as a group. So we have the five priorities. Install sidewalks on the designated Safe Routes to Schools. Host a walk-bike fun training session. So bike MN not only develop the curriculum, but you can apply to have them come to your school district. They'll provide all the bikes and they'll teach your faculty how to teach the curriculum in school. It's a really great program. I know there are some organizations that will help pay part of the cost for teachers to attend, so their salary costs, not maybe what their after salary is, but a portion of it. Procure a bicycle fleet and implement the Walk Bike Fun in your FIAE classes. Participate in the Walk Bike Fun to School Days in the fall, winter and/or spring. And to strengthen the Safe Routes to School outreach to student families by sharing information on the school webpage, Back to School Day, parent and teacher conferences. So that's getting the more education and the awareness out to the community. And I know the city was also pretty excited about that and their willingness to share it on the city webpage. Next is page 42, it's just an extra map of bicycle infrastructure, bicycle infrastructure recommendations. So understand that there are some low-cost opportunities for bike infrastructure, so anywhere where there's blue, you could designate them as shared bikeways or paint share rows on the roads. So share rows are the bikes with the little shadow rounds on them, just to raise awareness that bikes might be on this roadway. And then anywhere in blue, a blue bike is where we're going to place, the goal is to place bike racks and then bicycle repair stations that's in green. Through this planning process, we actually got a $5,000 grant to buy some bike racks, so there will be some branded bike racks going at the trailhead. Then we got some extra ones for the high school as well, or wherever the school district wants to place them. And the last page I'd like you to go look at is page 100. So on page 100, through the planning process, we helped the school district develop some SMART goals. So these are long-term goals related to the six E's on what the school district would like to accomplish. So if you take a look at that in free time, some of them involve sharing information, the bicycle fleet, walk-bike fun curriculum, engineering, building sidewalk gaps and other stuff. So that is the plan in a nutshell. Very exciting that we were able to finish it and MINDOT gave it its CEO approval. But now that it's done, we can go over homework. And there are some really great grants coming out, so there are several grants that will be due in February. One of them is an infrastructure grant. MINDOT raised the cap to $1 million. So that's going to be exciting and it's a no-cost match grant, so the city and the school wouldn't have to pay anything besides engineering and then the admin costs, which could be potentially done in kind, but it's a pretty good bang for your buck. There's also the boost grant, but Pelican just awarded the boost grant on the last solicitation. And that is all I have. Are there any questions?
Anybody have questions? The resolution, did you go over the resolution that we have?
Do you want to do that now?
No, did you want to say anything about that?
Oh, yeah, I can touch on it now. So there is a resolution in the agenda. Just to say the school is ready to fulfill a grant with MINDOT for the boost grant. So it is a reimbursement grant to the city, the school would have to pay upfront. And then once you pay it all off, as long as it's paid before June 30th of 2024, you will get reimbursement for it. And that is to pay for 30 to 40 bicycles, bike trailer, helmets, bicycle repair equipment, and then it's the schools to own. We have 10 other bike fleets in the region and so it's just a great way to enhance your school district, take some kids out on the new trail that was just built and do it in class or use it with your community education classes. Yeah, it's at the school how you would like to use it, but it's really a great program.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, we will move on. We have some administrative reports here. The elementary principal and AD of the school were given during the work sessions, so I'll see if you can touch on it a little bit. How about your student board reps? Well, Sanchez, I need them to look to us.
So I was just going to retouch on what Ms. Jay had to talk about for Homecoming Week with dress-up days, you know, sweatsuit, tropical day, jersey day, barbeque and candy, school spirit day, obviously on Friday. Monday night, we had a kickoff event at Zorbus, which was a hit, a lot of good participation there. Today, we had junior-senior games, which the seniors did dominate. And then ton of events going on on Friday with coronation, the parade, elementary pet fest, and then we have tailgating, the football game, food, bounce houses and games.
Well, students have been given the opportunity to audition for Fall Musical Play, this for grades four through 12th, and so far 35 students have auditioned. And that's with David Brown and Ms. Brown. Team captains, I'm retouching on what Ms. Jay was talking about, about the leadership roles. Team captains in every fall sport were selected as student athletes to represent Pelican Rapids Leadership Conference on September 18th. And again, retouching on what Ms. Jay said. Ms. King's class started working on a program called Pelican Rapids High School Media Page to fill, you know, families, friends, fill information going on about the high school and that is all of it.
Okay. Any questions? Thanks. Mr. Martinez, can you give us some finance information?
Yeah, I'd love to. All right, we'll start off with the treasurer's report for the month end of August. Kind of fun to get back into the swing of the cycle of the school year. We started our investment account with $6.9 million. State aid has now started to kick back in again, so we received $1.3 million from the state, of which we withdrew $1.1 million to cover all of our expenditures for a total on our investment accounts of $7.1 million. Also in the month of August, we pay the interest for our outstanding debt. So our building bond and a few other bonds that we have, we pay in at the beginning of August and then again we pay in February. So in our payables, they're buried in there. Cash on hand, we started with a negative balance of forty-three thousand dollars. You can see all the different starting balances. Throughout the month, we had deposits of one-point-one million dollars into our checking account, part of which was a direct deposit from our investment accounts. We had five-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand dollars in accounts payable. This is all the bills that run through the school district in the August, in addition to the interest for our outstanding bonds. We had four-hundred-and-three thousand in total payroll cost. At the end of the month, we had total cash on hand of two-hundred-and-two thousand for a total cash on hand between investments and checking account for seven-point-three million dollars. So pretty healthy, pretty comfortable spot to be in terms of cash flow for the school district. Any questions regarding the treasurer's report? The last pages in the treasurer's report, again, is all the bills that we paid throughout the month of August. And as I always say, if you have any questions and any of the payables, please email me, and I'll be more than happy to provide supporting documentation for it. If there are no questions, I'll just carry on, just talk about a few other things that are in the agenda for the board to consider and approve today. The first one is business item B, which is to approve the staff development revenue agreement. Pelican Rapids School District and the union, the teachers' union have had this ongoing agreement for many, many, many years, which gives the authority of the teachers' union to waive one percent of staff development. By Minnesota statute, we have to set aside two percent of our state aid that we receive in a fiscal year. This particular agreement gives us the authority for the teacher unions to waive one percent, of which helps cover expenditures for the school district. What are those expenditures? The biggest cost is the first two weeks of staff that we have before, when we have staff returned back before we get students. So all of those trainings, all of that staff development, this one percent covers that. In addition to, it helps offset any negotiation costs. So some of those salary increases that we give teachers after negotiations settle, this particular agreement helps cover that. Again, it's a great benefit both for the teachers' union and for the district as we're able to offer very good settlements with the union and also provide really good staff development before we get kids at the start of the year. The second thing that I'll have you guys take a look at and approve is the levy certification piece. With the levy certification piece, it's a process that we start every single year. With levy, it's a little bit, it's a little bit of a mess when it comes into date. Why do I say that? Because we're actually levying for fiscal year twenty-five, which is next year, but we actually have to follow calendar years. So again, the revenue that we're approving today is actually for next year's school year. Okay? Today, what we really need the board to do is to pass a motion to set the maximum. When we do that, it gives us the flexibility that if there are any numbers that change between now and December, we can adjust. So we don't want to call out a specific number, because then we're locked to that number. We want to say the maximum, that way we can capitalize on every dollar. Some big changes, I always like to give you guys a comparison in terms of levy dollars. You see the column for fiscal year twenty-four and the column for fiscal year twenty-five. That way, we can track and enable to measure what are some of those things that change. Biggest thing that changed was in community ed. Because of new legislative rules, we were able to receive additional dollars for our H care that we have, which is club bikes. So Minnesota statute came in and said, hey, we're going to increase some funding for those schools that have school H care, which we do. So we're going to receive an additional, an additional twenty thousand dollars there. Also, they're going to put a big emphasis on ECFE, which is our early childhood programming. We're going to receive an additional fourteen thousand dollars there. So community ed is going to get an additional investment from the state for our forty-one thousand dollars. Other thing to highlight is, if you scroll all the way down, and thank you so much. This is just kind of staying true to our word, which is, we said that we were going to refinance all of our outstanding debt a couple of years ago, which helped us capitalize some of those savings to redo the parking lots and all those fun, fun, fun projects that you guys have seen over the last of the last forty-eight months around the school district, which was, we refinanced our building bond to lower interest rate, and then we used that gap financing for all the school projects. But in addition, we also pulled the tax figures, that they were going to save money. So if you look at the tax rate, it's going from seventeen percent to fifteen percent in the footprint of our school district. So our taxpayers are going to see an additional increase from some of the tax levy dollars. It's a two percent decrease. Overall, in the footprint of our school district, the total market value increased by over five-hundred-and-nine thousand dollars. So again, our district is very, very land-rich, because we have lots of lakes. And I'm not going to go down that path, I'm going to stay positive today. And I'm just going to say that we are doing our due diligence, and we're saving our taxpayers this upcoming fiscal year two percent. So today, please set the levy to maximum. And then in December, when the final numbers come, that's when we all collect it into a dollar value. Do you guys have any questions regarding the treasurer's report, or the one percent staff development waive agreement, or the levy set to maximum?
All right, thank you so much.
All right, thanks.
Mr. Court, last one.
Fall workshop, a couple of weeks ago, we had a new teacher workshop and then district workshop, and we had a number of items that we had training with, from curriculum standards to staff training and leader meeting, having the leader and the coach work with our staff at the high school and elementary. Elementary had Mr. Nelson talk about the curriculum training that they had at the elementary, and from CPI, first aid, bloodborne pathogens type three and safety procedures. Mentor mentee, the nice thing about new teacher workshop is that we have mentors for our new staff. We had one new staff, this is their third school district. They said this is the first time having a mentor, and how much they appreciate the mentor just after the first couple of days. Motivational speaker we had, John Creesel came in, talked to district staff. We invited the community to come in and join us. We had quite a few community members join us for that speaker. And I thought the speaker was very good, had good feedback from staff. You know, it wasn't all about education, it was really just about life, and his story, and how life is good. So thank you to Minnesota National Bank, for lunch to our district staff on Monday. Appreciate them serving lunch, and they've done that about every year for the last, what, I would say about six to eight years, at least, so it's been nice. Staffing update, knock on wood, right now, we are good with. So as of now, tomorrow can change. But from certified to non-certified, we are staff at this point. Township meetings have been going well. Out of eighteen, I think we have ten completed, getting good feedback. At the township meetings, we're sharing the information, taking the brochure, going over the brochure that we mailed out this summer. And then, we're giving them an opportunity to talk about things that they would like to see the district offer or do. So we're getting good feedback there, and at the end, we will share that with the school board, our feedback that we receive from the township boards. Bus routes, I've been writing the bus routes here last couple of weeks, learning about the areas that we cover. Good way to get to know kids, but also connect with our bus drivers and learn a little bit more about our transportation, which has been good. So I learn something every year. So we appreciate bus drivers, especially in the wintertime. Multi-use building update this week, electrical work is being completed. So we're making progress, it's going to be a nice building when it's all done. Enrollment, from last spring to the beginning of the school year here, we were down six students. So we were at eight-thirty-nine, and now we're at eight-thirty-three, so down six. One item I just want to talk about in the consent items is approving the MOU for Doug Bergman. And Doug Bergman is in the position of our dean of students, and that's an MOU between the teachers' union and the school district, which gives him, he has the rights to his teaching position if for some reason that position would work out for him, or he'd want to go back to the classroom. So it's an agreement between the district and the school district, so. I think other than that, we had a couple resignations and a couple hires, which is good. Upcoming events, we've talked about Homecoming Week, Viking Gala, got teacher workshop, which is already filling up. And our goal with teacher workshop on October ninth is really to give teachers time. Time to meet with their departments, their grade levels, work on curriculum grading, things like that. So that's our goal of October ninth, even though we have kind of filled it up with a couple of meetings in the morning for them. And MEA break, and then we'll have teacher workshop. Just remember, our parent-teacher, teacher workshop's November sixth, November thirteenth. Parent-teacher conferences, elementary is from twelve to six, I believe, high school's one to seven. And we do that just so parents, staff can get to the buildings and not miss out on conferences. That's all I have.
Any questions?
I have a guess met on the Mulderburgs building. You've already moved the building a place just.
Like when it's going to be done?
Yeah.
I think we stopped doing that. That's better than our hurts. It's week by week, so that's why I just, you know, give an updates. When Mr. Stevens comes in, goes like, here's this week, here's next week, he's done what he's done. Just because of weather, and then people getting them to fit it in too, to get the work done. So I think right now, we're saying it's going to be all done, it's going to look good for the first track meet in the spring.
I was expecting you to say the first football game next year.
No, no, it should be done by spring. Seems to be moving on pretty good, don't it?
Yeah.
Any questions? All right, we'll move on, now I get to read. All right, we'll move on to consent items. Approved board meeting minutes, August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, regular meeting. Financial claims and obvious bills. C, treasurer's report. D, accept donations. We have student accounts, eighty dollars, Laura Klemic, Viking Boutique, eighty dollars, Laura Klemic. The OMP Scholarship Fund, thirty dollars, Lakeland General Store. PRHS Scholarship Fund in memory of Chuck Berg, one hundred dollars, class of ninety-four. To the High School Scholarship Fund, a member of Jack Tour, one thousand two-hundred-and-sixty, sixty dollars, somebody anonymous. And the High School Scholarship Fund in memory of Randy Stamp, twenty dollars, it's a Petsnet. Student accounts, five hundred dollars from Cormorant Lutheran Church. To the High School Girls Soccer, five hundred and fifty dollars from John and Linda Restroom and Maria. How was that last name? Okay, scholarship fund, five hundred dollars from Joe and Ann Carmola. Headed meeting personnel, approve the resignation of Julie Jones as high school custodian. Approve the resignation of Celeste Stahl as part-time special education paraprofessional at Viking Elementary. Approve the hire of Alejandra Rivera as high school custodian. Approve the hire of Julie Morsching as high school special education paraprofessional. And approve the MOU for Doug Bergman. Motion for the consent items. Motion by Greg, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Molly. Any discussion on the consent items? Hearing no discussion, all is favor approving the consent items, signified by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same. Consent items carry. Three business items here. Item A, approve the resolution for safe routes to school, boost grant. And this is a resolution. I've got it here, so. Entertained a motion for the resolution?
I'll make motion for the resolution.
Okay, motion by Stacy, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ann. Okay, this is a resolution, so. Resolution for safe routes to school, SRTS boost grant. Whereas the Minnesota Department of Transportation, MINDOT parentheses, safe routes to school programs assist schools and communities by making it safer for children to walk to bike, biking, walk and bike to school. And whereas, MINDOT, safe routes to school programs solicitous application to enable schools and communities to implement safe routes to school, non-infrastructure activities. And whereas, Pelican Rapids School District is awarded the SRTS boost grant, these funds will be used to provide non-infrastructure activities to local communities to develop safe routes to school initiatives, to increase safety, encourage more children to walk and bicycle to school. And whereas, no local match funding is required. Whereas, SRTS boost grant activities will commence after the grant agreement is fully executed. So resolution, Molly, how do you resolve?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Yes. Ann?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Resolution carries. So item B is to approve the staff development revenue agreement. And that is in the packet. Correct. We need to read on that, so. We have a motion to approve the staff development revenue agreement.
Name, motion.
Motion by Ann. I'll second it. Any discussion on staff development revenue agreement? Hearing no discussion, all is favor approving the staff development revenue agreement, signified by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same. Motion carries. C, certify the proposed tax levy for the tax year twenty-twenty-three to twenty-four at the maximum amount. Do we need to do a resolution line, or just an important motion? Okay. Anybody want to make that motion?
I make a motion to certify the proposed tax levy for the tax year twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four at the maximum amount.
Motion by Brenda, do we have a second?
I'll second. I have Molly.
We have a second by Molly. So we have a motion by Brenda, second by Molly. Any discussion on certifying the proposed tax levy for tax year twenty-three, twenty-four at maximum? Hearing no discussion, all is favor approving. The motion, signified by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same. Motion carries. We will move on to upcoming meetings. We have October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Regular meetings at six P.M. I'm going to be adjusting it, okay? Due to a football game that evening, we're going to move it to five P.M. On the eighteenth. We need a motion to do that. Is that it in this meeting? Okay, so October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, regular meetings at five P.M. November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, regular meeting is at six P.M. So, I don't have anything else, so I want a motion to adjourn. I'm going to adjourn to Greg, okay? Second by Stacy. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all is favor returning, signified by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same. Motion carries. Thanks, everybody.